We're going to call to order the public hearing on the expenditure of up to $174,000 from the retention fund balance. So, Dr. C. 198, or Board B. Section two, and the use of the funds is for the replacement of the flooring, the Littlewood Middle School classroom, as part of the multi-year flooring projects that we've been working on for a decade or thereabouts.
Prepared or replaced? For an international book of these, you are sending a $1,000 donation to shelter block for housing for disaster. We have ideas for more projects. One, community service ideas. Help with service at citizens' and senior citizens'. Two, make no smoking, no vaping posters to put up around town. Second, our second idea. International service idea. Raise money to donate to cancer research. Respectfully submitted by the Early Act Conferences 2023 to 2024. Oh, President and President. Caleb and Ray Ray. Secretary Dawson. Treasure Island. Early Act Department. Maureen Pauline. Lincoln Woodstock Rotary. Jay Pauline. Lincoln Woodstock Rotary. Bob Nelson. Lincoln Woodstock Rotary. Mary Jo Best. Lincoln Woodstock Rotary. And Lincoln Woodstock School.
Very nice job.
Thank you for coming and sharing that with us. It sounds like you guys are doing a lot of good work.
Any questions for them? They're ready.
I get to hear about all the work you do at Rotary, and it's awesome. I'm psyched, I'm excited when Maple will be old enough to join, and thank you for all of your work.
Has there been one project that's been most gratifying so far?
Probably like the soccer field, because we talk about that a lot. And everybody wants to join in, but Mr. Lux only needs like a couple people to do it. So, we've been talking about that a lot.
I got a question for all of you, just to kind of think about, wondering about. So, you've been meeting now since, I think, when we kind of started, so several months now. I'm just wondering, like, how have you seen things change from when you first started as a group to where you are now, like with your meetings and how they run and how you work together as a team? Just kind of curious how it's changed.
They know how to run a meeting, right?
Normally, it starts off either with Caleb or me, and normally into Caitlin, Autumn normally does all the minutes, and meets up at minutes. But I think in the beginning, we started, like, we didn't work really well together as a team. Now, like, once we get into groups, we're working together, we're letting everybody share instead of just like one person sharing, with the same, like, a lot of people in place to like pick up all the stuff.
Nice, awesome.
Is there a project that's really hard?
Probably the cookie trail. There's a lot of cleaning up to do, and like, there is this massive tree in the middle of it, which that's gonna definitely would be pretty hard. Not how long it is, we have to do a lot of cleaning up, but I think how many people are gonna be there, I think it's gonna be easier than, never mind.
Nice, yeah, that was good, makes total sense.
You're strong.
What's the cookie trail? Which trail is that?
Um, it's the trail, um, so, trail that you go, that we walk on for ASP, and then you take a left and then go into that trail.
I see.
You need help with a chainsaw to take care of the tree?
Probably, yes, 100%.
I know a volunteer that will help you.
1:00 AM, 8 o'clock, May 18th, that Saturday morning. Does anyone know, is there a key available to unlock that gate that doesn't work well? Because it is, is there a way to unlock it? And is there any more chain link fence available? We're hoping to repair that.
Yeah, that's right.
Right, this chicken wire.
The gate in the playground?
It's the gate up to the trail.
The one at the top of the steps of the playground, correct?
It's.
In the corner?
Yes, near the ground.
It's like right behind the honey bin. And it's always been holding, it's only being held by a chain and a lock.
I believe that on the repair list for this summer, but I'm not. I would check with Mr. Hood, but we put some money aside to actually redo that fencing. I thought it was this summer, but.
I was told it was done.
Maybe connect with Mr. Hood, or we could have them.
Either way, we will make sure it gets fixed.
Maybe if it's on the repair list, we can have the materials here on May 18th. And if needed, someone needs to go get them, I would volunteer to drive already, so we'd be delighted to get them.
It's still on my list, I didn't check it off, but that doesn't mean anything, no, it's.
And as far as the lock, I mean, if there's not a key, we can get that off. We should have access to the stairs, that's why the kids got the fence, because they couldn't get through the gate.
Yeah, there are.
Materials for the shed, Doug Moorhead thinks that he's got most of it. He said we probably just need a gallon of paint, just to close enough to match what the shed is now, and paintbrushes. So, if we remove that, is it okay with the school that we are here and doing that work on that Saturday morning?
I think we need to defer to the administration, as far as the board goes, we're fine, but I think that's it.
Yeah, we allow volunteers, except for. Yeah, I mean, that's what I mean, we allow volunteers out there without mechanized equipment technically, due to liability purposes, but I'd be more than happy to take care of that.
Paintbrushes and rakes are doing.
Yeah.
Yes. So, you need a gallon of paint and paintbrushes?
Yes, I was just gonna pick that up, over time.
Oh, I'm sure we have that.
Yeah, we can, we'll let Mr. Hood get that for you. A gallon of paint and paintbrushes for them to use on May 18th.
Do you guys have any other question?
Anything else you need?
Oh, yeah, one more thing, um, that I forgot to share. We also have to organize inside the shed, because, yeah, it looks like, it's like.
Everything's thrown in there, and we're gonna need like new chairs.
Yeah, like.
Yeah, chairs and racks for all the stuff.
Part of that reward, right?
Are there not shelves in there now?
There's a frame.
No. It's got like bags and buckets, so.
Yeah, yeah, they're just. And like, I think we should definitely, like, try to keep more, try to keep the shed more organized, because, yeah.
That's a great idea, maybe you could share with your friends and your classes and such, that then have them help you keep it organized once it's cleaned out. And I would talk to Mr. Moorhead about shelves, he's kind of the king of building anything.
He's taking a good look at it.
Good, I bet he's got some ideas.
And Mr. Lux is working with these guys on that field the week before during recess.
Fantastic.
And then Ray Ray is right, nobody's gonna start with the fifth graders for the line initially, but he said it needs to be done repeatedly, so there will be opportunities for fourth graders and third graders.
Fantastic.
You can all leave back.
It is, it's all right.
Thank you for all that you do.
You did great.
Double questions, have a great night.
You can run next to your show.
She's literally like.
You want to ride them?
He's like, yeah, I wanna.
That was awesome. We do like every meeting, have the kids come in, that was cool. Thank you, I'll find it on the board, because that stuff's happening.
All right, next up is the approval of the minutes from April 10.
I'm making a motion to approve the minutes of the 10.
I'll second. Thank you.
I will correct him.
Yes.
Second page, at the bottom, Tammerham noted. The garage at the Red Doors, it used to be the Red Slay, and that's probably what I said, but the name of it is actually the Launchpoint Lodge now. So, we can, I probably did say Red Slay, because it was a Red Slay in forever. But it's the Launchpoint Lodge is the correct name. And that was it, thank you Sharon, you do an awesome job on the minutes.
I have one more, Sharon. Did I spell my name?
Oh, no.
K D V E N, five or six, oh, here we go, top of six, the third.
Oh, down the end, that last. I missed it.
I guess it was my head. Hammond's always just looking for his name.
It's the only thing I check for.
Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, extensions, and that motion carries. And then next up is approval of the non-public minutes from April 10.
We'll make a motion and prove it's presented.
Thank you, Danny.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, extensions, and that motion carries. Next up is correspondence, we did receive the North Country Educational Services, and newsletter, and then two invitations, one for, the invitation to participate in the North Country Charter Academy graduation.
What was that?
So, that is. Yeah, May 30th, 5:30 of the month.
That's the. I go that. Oh, okay. The elementary concert, it's the same night, yeah. Thank you for going to that.
And then the other one is the KD Organization Communities Fund for Preview, are putting on regional summit related to substance use prevention and treatment. Looks like there's some good keynote speakers there, something that's interested in that, that's down in Fulham State.
Can I look at that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's all the correspondence I received. Next up is, this is Mr. Report.
Yeah, just a couple of things, it's a busy time of year, I'm not sure when it isn't, but anyway, it is busy. We have open enrollment going on right now for our staff for insurance, so they can make changes to their insurance. It's also the end, getting to the end of the year for the financial reporting, and then setting up the beginning, the new fiscal year, so it's just kind of busy. Same with not only the financial, but also a lot of stuff that Sharon does with the student data and enrollment reports, you know, they're getting ready to submit all the end-of-year reports and get things going for the next year, so. Also, we'll be sending out shortly to the staff all of the budget and ordering information for the new school year, because they'll be filling all that out, and we place a lot of orders during the summer. Anyway, just a lot going on.
Duncan McGann, Superintendents Report.
Yes, I just want to mention a few things. The NIASK, New England Association for Schools and Colleges, has visited today, and they will be visiting tomorrow, and I think they'll add more to that in this report. But it did include five educators, it's been fascinating meeting, and they've met with all different groups of staff members throughout the, you know, throughout K through 12, so. Very interesting, and I watched a lot of the students walk through little classes, but you can give more detail on that. The next thing is that we are moving forward with our scheduling for next year's classes. There are a few changes. One of the changes that I've mentioned before is the, that the high school French class, we have not been successful in getting a teacher for that for the past, well, we did have one for last year, but this year we didn't. It was not even successful, so we're gonna focus in on the world language for the eighth grade, and see if we can get that interest up, and give them that information, and then, you know, maybe next year it will be better out there with the staff and the number of teachers available. But we do offer, again, to be lax if anybody is still interested in French. Spanish is a strong, you know, we're doing Spanish one and two.
Now, there are a lot of other local high schools that aren't even offering French anymore, or just they're offering just Spanish and world language.
Right, right.
I think it's becoming.
I think it's strong.
A trend, yeah.
Yeah, you know, just another thing. Let's see, we are looking at just aligning the middle school schedule with the high school schedule, trying to get them, I know we're doing this again, trying to get the timing of each of the classes the same so that we can start, you know, using teachers and having them use different, teach different classes, 6 through 12. So, we'll be, you know, looking at that as well, we can get different ways of doing that. And that's all I have right now, everything else can be fulfilled within the agenda.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. Couple of highlights, last Saturday, I mentioned I know all students were talking afterwards, but we had the Northern, we hosted the Northern District Music Festival, which is for middle school students here, very, very well attended, but basically students from around the region and all the way down to the Newfoundland area, over to Conway, and then north, all come together. They work with a guest conductor, whether it's a band or the chorus, they work for the day with these other students, and then put on this amazing performance at 4:30. Over 150 kids came together, lots of music teachers came to support their students and support throughout the day. Kristen Bushway and Tom Underseas, they then spearheaded this piece since when we asked the board to be able to allow this to happen back in the fall, and it went off very smoothly, and just an amazing group of not only educators, but parents that support their kids, and then the students were amazing across the board, so. Wanted to share that, there will be a link that will be eventually provided, they fill it through a professional company, and they go and they do all their modifications by the teams, and then they'll send each director for all the participating schools alike that will get them, and we'll share their artworks for you, once we receive that, so. Wanted to just kind of give a shout out and a congratulations to our valedictorian this year, Abashay Corey, and then solidatorian, Dr. Bailey. So, these are our one and two, in terms of GPA seniors this year, both are amazing individuals. They have both been invited, the North Country does a scholar's breakfast up at White Mountain Regional towards the end of the month, so they will be headed up there, their families are invited, myself, Dr. McGann will head up as well, so they have that coming up. So, that's really fantastic. Shout out to everyone that's kind of helped this week with, we do staff appreciation week, not just teacher appreciation week. You know, it's the, the PTA, the Booster Club, a lot of parents that have just, you know, said that they'd be willing to bring some stuff in, and we've had quite the selection all week on both ends of the building, and then the community businesses that have donated raffle prizes for staff as well, so.
Thanks.
Wanted to recognize that. And then just two more quick things, one is we did our Hat Day, Hat Week fundraiser to support, you know, the families and people that were impacted by the fire that happened a couple weeks back. We raised just over $1,000. Community Resource Center came in, and we gave them the check, and then they're gonna use it as to be to support those families, so that was four days of hat wearing, and kids and families were extremely generous with that, so.
I love that, and so did all of the kids. And I think that would be a fantastic annual thing to do for some cause. Yeah, anything, doesn't have to be a disaster, just something, you know, because the kids really loved it and got into it, and then they made sure they had that dollar, so they could wear that hat, and it was just very cool to.
Yeah, I think it's just something, you know, something that our community does so extremely well, and that's rallying when something comes up, that is another example of that. Usually, it's the community businesses supporting us, and a way to, you know, be able to jump in there and support that. And then finally, just to mention, you know, we did have the first day of our collaborative NIASK visit today. I mean, basically, it was meetings from 7:15 in the morning till we finished the staff meeting right around 4 o'clock. So, we did have that visiting team that has educators from New Hampshire and Maine actually is part of it. They went to dinner, and then they're spending tonight kind of debriefing, and then what will happen is tomorrow we'll come in, work on the first draft of the report that they write in terms of our strengths or areas that we want to grow in, and then there'll be a conversation with administration, and then they turn that all into a final report that will get presented to you guys once it's compiled, you know, they, they got to meet with students and parents and.
This is really just the first step, yeah.
Yep, and again, just cycling back to several meetings ago at this point, but this is that first step. There will be a kind of a two-year growth plan put into place.
Yeah.
And then in two years, they'll come back, look at how far we've grown since then, you know, maybe we met the goals, maybe we're just moving in that direction still, kind of revise that, and then that's a cyclical process every two to three years until end year's deadline, so.
Fantastic.
I was able to be in the parent meeting, and it was, it's an awesome process, it was.
I've done it before too, yeah.
Yeah, so I encourage anybody, if it, when it comes up again, and then over the next 10 years or however long it takes, it's a cool process.
Committee reports.
None at this time.
None. Nominations, recommendations, resident agents.
Yes. I'd like the board to accept the letter of resignation for Peter Stavali as assistant principal.
Make the motion to accept Peter Stavali's resignation as assistant principal, I'll second.
Any further discussion on that?
Now, I'd like to make a nomination for Peter Stavali to be the principal of the 2425 school.
I'm kidding.
I'll make the motion. Thank you, Peter Stavali.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jennifer.
And welcome, and thank you, great.
Yeah, that's one year.
That's one. Yeah, we usually do a three-year contract, that's open.
I would, should we do one where we're hiring, you're gonna have to hire.
Well, you just said 2425, so that's.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, you should do a three-year contract.
Okay.
Last, last.
By having that year in there, right?
Should we be doing that, though, when we're getting a new superintendent, should we let the new superintendent make that decision? Or not? No.
No.
I don't, I don't know if we need to make a motion to put a year on it, just when you said, put a year on it, maybe it sounded like the motion was just for one.
We didn't specify it in the motion, so.
And I think if that was what is anticipated from him, and that he's agreeing to, then, yeah.
Well, I would hope so.
And if we're, yeah. This is what we've been going with, and if the superintendent, new superintendent needs to change something, that'll be there.
Yeah, yeah, cool.
I'm just saying, I got a chance to participate in the interview process for that, and that was great. It was a very impressive candidate, so. Very happy to present that, that we're getting that nomination. We need to vote on it? Yeah, yeah, no, we did, we did a.
Motion in a second.
Motion in a second, so, any further discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, extensions, and that motion carries, you then, so.
And that will be until July 1st, correct? Yeah, okay. You're staying until July 1st, or June, yeah.
And if we're assuming that we're gonna be advertising the vice president between, that's what we're dealing with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, the, I have another one, Courtney Bussnach, notch, sorry, I apologize to Courtney, I'm just pronouncing her name, for the second grade position, grade two, and her information is going around. With her experience, she has 10 years of experience, nine years of experience, so she'll be on Steph 10.
Where she come from?
She, student taught here.
I was gonna say, Ms. Pamperman mentioned that she was her student teacher, or she was her supervisor.
Where she been teaching for 10 years?
What was that?
Where has she been teaching for 10 years?
Uh, she's been in different, different schools and has experience in the, in the different schools. Fairly highly recommended.
I'll make a motion to accept the nomination of Courtney Bussnach. And I apologize if.
I know.
Judy, what's her name?
Yes, I can tell. Thank you, Danny, thank you, Joe. We'll just let everybody get a look at that.
Sure.
And I think, I would just say that during our meeting, during the interview with Peter Stavali, that candidate came up, and the folks that were involved in both seemed very impressed with her.
Oh, great.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Close, extensions, and that motion carries, so.
How many kindergarten registrations did we get, registrants?
I heard the number eight.
Mine, yeah, it was low, I found it out. Ten, ten.
Double digits.
It was 10.
Oh, 10.
Yeah, I just, I noticed when we were waiting our conference. Well, that's, I mean, unless there's a significant increase in that, it gives us room to move, sorry. Staff members still dominate, so, yeah.
So, we're, sorry.
I have a resignation from Chris Goodwin. He will not be coming back.
How long has he been here?
Four to five, yeah, a long time.
He's been doing small engines here for.
Well, probably a few times, it's like, yeah, same when I was here, but. And he's a part-time position? Yeah, yeah. It's gonna be too bad, I hope we are able to fill that, but we'll figure something. I'll make a motion to accept Chris Goodwin's resignation with regret.
Second. Thank you, Danny, thank you, Joe. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, extensions, and that motion carries, and thank Chris for his work on behalf of the district, and wishing good luck.
Okay, so the next one is Grants, this is a statement that we come out with every year, that you need, oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. We have to do this so drastic. I have to nominate, recommend your support staff.
Oh, yeah, so that's it for the nominations?
For teacher, right, nomination, now the recommendations.
At this time, that's the whole list, and the whole list is being recommended.
And these are all current?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. There's nothing new in here?
No.
What's a motion to approve the support staff recommendation as this was open?
The lows. Except for vacant. I want to recommend vacant.
We recommend that you fill that position.
We're trying. We're trying all year. Don't know, sorry.
Yeah. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, extensions, and that motion carries. I think we probably need all of that.
Can I? Hopefully with a new support staff contract, like, like, coming down. I mean, what?
So before we move on to the grants, what's, what do we have outstanding for teacher vacancies? Is it just the fourth grade?
Fourth grade.
Okay. And then the high school, we had one. We lost all of them.
PE, PE, Howard.
And then we're not replacing the social studies, I think it's.
Right.
Do we have a replacement for Chris Good?
Not replacing what?
Chris.
And small engines.
Well, we'll see what happens, you know, with that one. Yeah, we gotta, I don't want to lose, you know, that for the kids.
He's such a, a very important, kids need that.
Yeah.
He's got a lot of kids in the last, oh, how many years that he's really, really done well with, yeah.
That's a very important vocational part of our school, so I.
Yeah, definitely. Not huge in numbers, but huge in importance.
I think you're a dead big.
Thank you.
Grants. Okay, so the grant, this is a statement that comes out every year, and it gives the SAU, the superintendent, permission to seek any federal funds or any types of grants that are available.
Do you need a motion for that? No, we usually make a motion. I make a motion that we give the superintendent and or designate permission to seek, obtain, and expend any available funding to support, supplement, support or supplement the district's programs via grants. I'll second.
Thank you, Tammy. Thank you, Joe. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, extensions, and that motion carries.
And that's documented in the documented.
Yeah, and so I will basically be signing the authorizations and the certifications and compliance.
Right, okay. So you didn't have enough to sign, so that's good.
Yeah, there's a few more signatures there.
I do have a new board action request on behalf of next year's senior class. Remember, they came and presented, and they were trying to apply for the Grad Bash.
Did they get it?
Florida. They did get it.
Yay.
But you have a policy that I can't overrule, so I just, I need, we need permission from the board. Policy JJE, which is JJE dash R, senior trip policy, states that they cannot take school days, they cannot take out school days to go on a trip. So they would need Thurs, okay, so they go April vacation. They would need the Thursday and Friday before April vacation in order to go, but they can't do that unless you give them permission to.
I make a motion, we allow the senior class, the Thursday and Friday prior to April vacation next year to use as part of their senior class trip.
So just so you know, historically, when I was talking to Mrs. Baybor, that Grad Bash was always Friday and Saturday nights.
Right.
It is not. It is now like the four Fridays in April, and that's it.
I saw that, yeah.
So when they got, they got accepted yesterday, they got invited, so she was like, oh, I'm like, well, let's just, let's go through, make sure that you guys know that that's why they're looking to leave Thursday.
But we assumed they'd have to do with Grad Bash.
So that they can be that Friday night, and then they'll be back Monday. So it's just the shift of the trip. It doesn't lengthen the trip at all.
So they're going Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, that's it?
Yeah.
We're not opening up any real problems.
Last year, I believe the senior class was approved to leave Friday.
Okay.
Correct.
So. They took the bus.
And there was one class 100 years ago that also went, they came back on that last Monday, they got back to school as well. So that's then hap, that's happened as well. And that was because the.
Right, so they left Friday.
So they did not know that this was the schedule.
They were going on the assumption of what it's been for the last number of years.
Hundred years, yeah.
Well, luckily they got one.
Yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad they did, yeah. Yeah, exactly. Have a good time.
Thank you for doing that.
I just texted her, she said no.
I just made the motion, yeah.
The motion's been.
And Joe seconded.
Joe seconded. I felt we called it.
It sounds like there's already been some.
Yeah, no, I think flexibility and travel and unexpected circumstances come out, I just.
And based on the presentation, the kids have put in a lot of tickets. All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, extensions, and that motion carries. New business?
New business, huh?
I don't see any students anymore. Staff. How's it going?
Good, and you?
Hey, what'd you get?
A few things to report from Sean Hagan. AP students are practicing hard for AP tests that will be happening over the next few weeks. Sophomores are preparing to take the citizenship test tomorrow. From myself and Heather Krill, Aaron Lopes, and Sean Hagan, boys and girls of summer dates are being shared with students this week. We're doing reimagined, we're combining on some trips because members are going to be able to. We're doing a few things together and a few things separate as we survey the students, just to see what their interests were. From Jackie Wilson and Christie Morris, grade six had a great trip to Boston last Friday. The tour guide was Marquis de Lafayette. She mentioned that during our staff meeting. He was wonderful. The kids were engaged and impressed with the tour guide. Impressed the tour guide with all that they knew about the colonial and Revolutionary War time period. Thank you so much for supporting this trip. And from Aaron Marks and Diana Pamplin, the kid's heart challenge took place on Friday, May 3rd. Students in grades kindergarten through fifth participated in a variety of movement activities, including jump roping, hula hooping, basketball, soccer, and a creative drawing station. Focus on heart health and making healthy lifestyle choices were able to fundraise $1,636.37 for the American Heart Association. Pictures from this event can be seen on the wall just outside the elementary school library. Special thanks to sophomore class for helping out during this special event.
Thank you.
I also have a correction on my memo for dates. On the back of the memo, it gave some several dates. The ice cream social was changed to May 23rd. And graduation is June 7th. And then eighth grade continuation is June 11th, that's at 5:30.
Good morning. Thank you. I don't see any community, and don't believe we have any need to go non-public. All right, then I will accept the motion to adjourn.
So we'll.
Can we, like, do a committee plan superintendent search? So it doesn't look like we have anyone here to update us on the superintendent search. I can.
Well, I mean, we're a part of it, but there's no, there's nothing really to update on right now.
I think tomorrow we start interviews, and there's three desirable candidates to be interviewed. That's the, that's the, really.
I mean, the application process is still open anyway, so.
It is.
People can still apply for it, so we're, that's what we're.
He said they're starting tomorrow?
Yes.
Yeah.
Did anyone make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, we did.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, extensions, and that, we are adjourned. Thank you.